The regular meeting of the St. Joseph County Council, August tenth, two thousand twenty-one, is now called a leer.
Okay, um, next on the agenda, resolutions. Clerk, will you please read Bill number eighty-five twenty-one?
Eighty-five twenty-one. Resolution of the St. Joseph County Council commending the St. Joseph County Health Department and health officials for handling of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Commissioner, County Council.
Uh, before we, uh, read the actual resolution, just want to make this part of the public record. There is no Indiana code requirement for a public hearing for consideration of a ceremonial resolution that has no legal effect. It is merely an expression of the county council's opinion on the item being considered. Mr. Carrick.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a resolution of the St. Joseph County Council commending the St. Joseph County Health Department and health officials for handling of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. Whereas, on March sixth, twenty twenty, the governor of the state of Indiana issued Executive Order twenty-two, which declared a public health emergency exists throughout the state of Indiana as a result of the coronavirus disease, twenty nineteen, COVID-nineteen outbreak in the United States, and a confirmed report that the disease had spread to the state of Indiana. And whereas, on March eleventh, twenty twenty, the World Health Organization declared COVID-nineteen to be a global pandemic. And on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, the President of the United States declared a national emergency with respect to this dangerous virus, which is still ongoing. And whereas, the United States, the state of Indiana, and St. Joseph County, Indiana, are now facing a new variant, Delta strain, of COVID-nineteen. And whereas, the St. Joseph County Health Department and the St. Joseph County Health Officer, Dr. Robert Einters, and Deputy Health Officer, Mark Fox, have been instrumental in the efforts to fight COVID-nineteen in St. Joseph County, including meeting with, meeting regularly with local health officials and hospitals, the South Main Chamber of Commerce, and civilian county leaders to inform stakeholders of the ongoing efforts regarding COVID-nineteen prevention, mitigation, and treatment, issuing weekly statements on the status of COVID-nineteen in St. Joseph, in the St. Joseph County community, taking guidance from Governor Holcomb and the State, the State Department of Health led by Dr. Chris Fox, and taking the onus off local business to make and enforce their own masking requirements by issuing a county-wide mask requirement to keep community members and workers safer from COVID-nineteen. And whereas, the St. Joseph County Health Department, Doctors Einters and Fox, continue to take steps to keep St. Joseph County safe from COVID-nineteen by doing outstanding job of establishing and operating a vaccine clinic serving all county residents as soon as the COVID-nineteen vaccines became available. The department administered a total of seventy-three thousand five hundred and seventy-eight vaccines at the St. Hedwig Vaccination Clinic. It continues to find ways to extend the COVID-nineteen vaccine into areas of the county with persistent low rates of vaccination. And whereas, the St. Joseph County Health Department and Doctors Einters and Fox have been recognized by Governor Holcomb and Dr. Box for providing outstanding leadership on controlling COVID-nineteen through mitigation efforts such as mask orders and social distancing requirements, and have received many accolades for delivering COVID-nineteen vaccines so efficiently, including the submission of many supportive and thankful letters to the South Main Tribune. And whereas, the St. Joseph County Council wishes to commend the St. Joseph County Health Department and the St. Joseph County Health Officer and Deputy Health Officer for all of their efforts at keeping St. Joseph County, Indiana, as safe as possible from COVID-nineteen. Now, therefore, be resolved by the St. Joseph County Council that Section One, on behalf of the citizens of St. Joseph County, Indiana, and the St. Joseph County Council, we commend and recognize the St. Joseph County Health Department and St. Joseph County Health Officer, Dr. Robert Einters, and Deputy Health Officer, Dr. Mark Fox, for their efforts at guiding our residents through the COVID-nineteen pandemic that swept through our cities, county, and state this past year.
Thank you, Mr. Carrick. Any comments or questions from council? Mr. Root.
It seems we disappointed that the council could lead the public voice out of their standing as a revolutionary, that wanted the health department to know. Because the council will not allow the people who have come here tonight to speak freely about the revolution, I will read their holding letter into the record. Not necessarily all of my opinions are thought, but given opinions of the people who wanted the scene, they're not allowed to come down. The members of the St. Joseph County Council.
You can hear them very well.
We urge you not to honor the St. Joseph County Health Department with the resolution commending them for their handling of COVID-nineteen. We feel that the office is both politicized and has been revealed by, been revealed by many recent news articles, and more focused on scaring the citizens of this county and controlling them than providing them with the information they need to make their own health decisions. It is especially disconcerting that Mark Fox has already invited the students not to go back to in, to school in person, and that he's already warning of a future mask mandate. He has made these pronouncements while our county is still in the blue, the lowest level advisor, of advisory in the state of Indiana. It is also upsetting that Mark Fox continues to push for all students to mask, even when masks prevent children from breathing freely and have been shown to carry dangerous pathogens and hinder learning, communications, and social connections. When children have a ninety-nine point nine-nine-five percent survival rate, there is absolutely no reason for the, to mandate masks and destroy the normal course of their childhoods. Mark Fox is out of touch and radical, and we cannot let him rule our county, and he certainly doesn't deserve these accolades. Life cannot stop forever for a virus, and we feel that the health department would use the variants as an excuse to keep our freedom locked up forever. While we know that older people, especially those with cold morbidities, may choose to be extra cautious, we cannot continue to let public health authorities call the shots. Our own county statistics show that no one under forty has died in half a year and a half of living with this virus. We know how to mitigate risk for ourselves. We are no longer willing to put regular life aside to be safe from COVID as our businesses crumble around us and our side, society unravels. We know our health department has pushed upon public officials to enforce heavy-handed regulations in the past, and we expect they will continue to do so in the future unless they are stopped. It is particularly egregious that this health department is being honored by the county council for the illegal mask order it put forward in May of twenty twenty. The resolution specifically laws the health department for taking the onus off local businesses to make and enforce their own masking requirements by issuing a county-wide mask requirements. Bob Einters deceived county residents for months, acting like he had the authority to issue his own law to make everyone wear masks. If you recall, our county was the first in the state to issue a mask order, and Bob Einters issued his order way before the governor issued his own mandate. When sued, Bob Einters finally admitted in a court settlement that he had overreached his authority by issuing the order. But now we're supposed to honor him for this? How can the council do this in good conscience? Remember, taxpayers had to pay for that lawsuit. Finally, based on, uh, and I think I'll, I'll draw there, we urge you to reconsider, the citizens of St. Joseph County reconsider and withdraw your resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Any other comments from any council member?
I'd like to make some comments.
Ms. Hess?
Uh, I'm not going to counter everything that was in the notification that we received, the same message that floated our email box for the past two days, it was the exact same message. We also did receive messages of support from the health department. I'm not going to read those either into this. But as Councilwoman Katanzeray and Mr. Council, Commissioner Castelmi indicated, there were hundreds of volunteers that supported the health departments in their efforts for vaccination and mitigating the spread of COVID in our community. And I think there are hundreds of people, and I know there's at least a couple here tonight that would speak on behalf of the county health department and this resolution if they were allowed to speak as well. So, it's just, this is a time to honor the department, all the hard work of the staff, uh, and the volunteers and the fast, urgent effort they had to take in order to address this emergency health situation in our community and our nation and the globe.
Thank you, Ms. Hess. And may I have a motion on Bill number eighty-five twenty-one? Do I get a second?
Second.
A motion to pass, Bill number eighty-five twenty-one, was made by Councilwoman Hess. It was seconded by Councilman Carricki. Any other comments from council on Bill eighty-five twenty-one? Clerk, will you please take the roll? Okay. Mr. Kusinski?
Yes.
Mr. Nolan?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Hess?
Yes.
Mr. Tullian?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Katanzeray?
Yes.
Mr. Kenraki?
Yes.
Mr. Root? Mr. Morton?
Yes.
Motion carries, uh, seven to one. Thank you. Let the record show that Bill number eighty-five twenty-one was passed by a vote of seven to one. Next on the agenda, it's privilege of the floor, limited to three minutes on items not on tonight's agenda. Please state your name and address for the record, so we have three minutes to address the council.
Rick Ruskowski, two thirty-three South Main, Phinnies next door, managing partner, South Bend, Indiana. Members of the elected county council, I come here today in hopes of watching a democracy where elected officials act in the best interest of the constituents that elected them to office. Instead, I'm witnessing the silence of voices. In my many years of following the council, both sitting at county, I have never seen a vote overturned based on public comments, either for or against a particular bill or resolution. I'm sure this may have happened at some point in time, but I cannot recall an instance that I can honestly refer to for argument's sake, so I squash the public voice. All throughout the nation and in social media, we are experiencing cancel culture and silencing opposing opinions and voices. Freedom of speech was and is a main principle of establish and maintain this free country. A tour claim was recently filed on my behalf informing the county health department and commissioners of my intentions. It was discovered, uh, it was discovered and exposed that the health department and others, through many different avenues, targeted, harassed, demeaned, and totally, or attempted to totally, destroying not only my business, me personally, but many individuals, including elected officials, in most cases because of the differences of opinion. Phinnies was visited and documented by health department officials sixteen times in twenty days open. Sixteen in twenty days. On most of the visits, the rules, and I put them in quotes, were fluid and changed by the representative from the health department and their translate, translation of the laws and our rules. Every single visit was something different, every single time. There was no structure in any of this. Uh, we were never even notified of a closure, that we even had to close. If we were watching the news or doing something, we would have never even known. So, the communication between the health department and the public is horrendous, but I'm not going to go into the details of these visits with you, as I'm quite sure nothing I say would surprise you or even cause you concern based on the procedures or lack thereof that I witnessed here tonight. I'm going to read the summary of the filed tour claim. That was three minutes?
Yes.
And if starting, want to introduce myself?
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody congruent with three minutes, just to finish this up? Of their time, or anybody willing to?
I'll give you one three minutes. That's all right.
No, that's the same thing. It's great to finish this.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, it's, it's just the, the summary of the tour claim, which I'm not sure if you guys received.
You can agree with me, sir.
Um, members of the St. Joseph Board of Health and officials with university adversity did proceed to issue public statements defending Phinnies. Most notably, Dr. Einters stated publicly to the media, "Have you ever had the good fortune of going to a canyon, going to Kenya during the Great Wilderbeest Migration? The animals hip to hip, nose to nose, grunting and making all sorts of guttural sounds. Perhaps what was lacking was a very distinct order that one notices in a Wilderbeest Migration." It is very serious matter, as was like. Official from the University of Notre Dame joined in the course of defamatory statements against Phinnies despite the lack of evidence or any violations of the law. In my closing, the finish will be... I'm not going to end this with a summary of events, not allowing public input whether for or against this resolution demonstrates the support or lack thereof, the businesses, citizens of this community. It demonstrates that you, the council, are all in with the health department and their draconian enforcement tactics as stated in uncovered emails. Draconia is defined as basically a death sentence. I'm left with assuming, based on your vote, that you are in favor of all the past, present, and future actions taken by the health department, no matter the effects, harms, the effects it has or the harms it adversely or inadvertently causes. Thank you for your time, allowing me the freedom to express myself, especially you, Mr. Root, for your noble, thank you.
Mr. President, if you have one question?
Mr. Root?
Mr. Ruskowski, I'd just like, in your opinion, did the St. Joseph County Health, I mean, we've heard for over a year and a half how dangerous COVID is, I think we all agree it was dangerous. In your opinion, did Notre Dame and the St. Joseph County Health Department willingly send Notre Dame students or allow them to go in? Did they, in that, or did they have pre-knowledge of the event that was taking place in February, and have received so much media attention? And in your opinion, did they make any effort to stop it, to save their students' health? Or, or were they playing a game of cat and mouse with you?
Um, specific details of, of one particular event that Mr. Root is referring to, I have many other instances prior to this where, again, in just answering your question, we had no contact with the health department other than their, which we, I mean, almost was a standard visit. Prior to the event that you're questioning, that, that the tour claim was based on, we had no contact with either Notre Dame or the health department, zero. Uh, if this, I feel, and you asked for my opinion, my opinion, if COVID was a concern, then why weren't we approached prior to, which we know they had knowledge prior to this event, at least two days prior to the event? Why were we not approached to ensure that we were following the COVID guidelines that were restricted by the governor, by the local health department, and I think by this, this council that gave them the authority to do that? We were following all of the guidelines. So, in following the guidelines, if they wanted to ensure that the health department was, you know, that for the safety of the community, why didn't they come out and contact us prior to? Instead of what we've later determined to find out, they included with the press and already had preconceived notions prior to even coming to Phinnies the night of the, the party in question. They'd already worked out their scenarios, which we've uncovered in emails, and then a few days after the event, no contact with us whatsoever via phone call, text message, email, any contact whatsoever. We, we have to pick up the newspaper to read the remarks that I just read you. That was done with the media, no contact with us. We were informed that we were on, we were in thin ice, and with one more violation, we'd be shut down. We had not received any information from the health department whatsoever, but had to read that in the newspaper and social media and other media broadcasts. Uh, I, I mean, I guess my whole thing, I know my time's up, but to answer your question, no, we had zero contact with them.
Mr. Carrick.
Just one quick question, you said sixteen times you were visited?
Yes, sir.
How much were you fined in total?
Zero. Zero fines.
Did they fine you in violation and during the sixteen times?
I, I don't know, because I've never received a, I mean, they would issue a report, so most of the time it was, "We don't like this." So, when I, it was, depending on who was visiting, which person would visit at the time, which inspector, the rules would change. I, so Phinnies followed what was, I, I can give you the exact name, but it was something Indiana health, that was put out by the state of Indiana prior to any restrictions being released for COVID, so that we were allowed to open up. We voluntarily, and I think there was only one or two other barbers in the area that followed the Indiana guidelines for, it was like, keep Indiana safe, or I, I can't, I can't give you the exact, okay, but we followed. Those were above and beyond any restrictions the county had put on us. They were much more stringent. Um, so we were following those guidelines, but every inspector that come out would have a different, different rule or different thing, and they wanted us to change some things. They said, "Okay, you change them on the spot." Other things, they said, "Well, one of the health department officials will contact you," or just, there was something different all of the time. I didn't even find out about, I, I guess, the abate order that we received that was in the newspaper prior to us even receiving it. I opened up the newspaper and I heard we're getting an abate order and had to actually call, uh, Mark Eschich to get a copy of the abate order. And then it was reported that during this, the event that Mr. Root spoke of, that we were not, we didn't have approval from the health department, no COVID plan in place. Our COVID plan had already been in place and approved by the health department. We actually had one before they approved it, and then once we received our abate information, we had to submit a different one to get it formally approved. We submitted the second abate order, and it was already approved. That was in October of twenty twenty, or the, um, other day dance was February of twenty twenty-one. But it was reported in the paper that we were...
How much you were fined, that was, that was a...
Yeah, I don't know, I, we had not received fines, and then you asked about any other citations or something. I, I don't even know that we received a citation.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
You were not shut down, correct? You were, you were not shut down?
Pardon?
You were not shut down.
Shut down when?
At all.
I mean, we were shut down for, what, four months for the, for the health department?
The health department shut you down.
To be honest with you, I would, and I will make this public, the health department doesn't have the power to shut me down. Thank you. They what?
They could, if you were not meeting standards, there was, like, a major...
I'm glad you brought that up. They could if I wasn't meeting certain requirements, correct? Correct, I wasn't shut down, so I was meeting requirements, I'm going to be chastising the newspaper and our media for violating things that I was never fighting or shut down for. But we're going to give celebration to the health department, what a great job they did. Thanks for representing your businesses and people in the community. Thanks, Mr. Root.
Amy Drake, from Ranger. Um, President Morton, you had the discretion to allow public comment earlier?
Ma'am, 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 public comment is restricted to items not on tonight's agenda. And that, that's the...
I am not going to be speaking about resolutions. I'm not going to be speaking about honoring the health department.
You just started out by saying I had the discretion, so obviously you're talking about what happened this evening.
Okay, so you don't want me to talk about how you stop us from speaking freely?
You're talking about what was on tonight's agenda, that's very obvious.
All right, I'll try it again. The St. Joseph County Health Department is extremely political, and its leadership has been heavy-handed and illegal. The health department's board member, Jason Marker, has bragged about how this health department has instituted draconian restrictions on the community. Dr. Einters has called those that disagree with him and our community "individuals who deny the validity of science and anti-science extremism." Dr. Fox has redefined her community to not include much of the public that has already had COVID and recovered. The health department used flimsy data to justify a call for churches in our community to close and got reprimanded by the state government, by the state attorney general, excuse me. The health department repeatedly went after bars in our areas, trying to crack down on them with nighttime raids, even issuing abatement orders against them despite the fact that no outbreaks were ever traced to the bars. The health department is currently telling our schools we are in code red, which by their standards means that schools should be virtual, despite our county being in the blue, the lowest level advisory by Indiana state standards. The health department admitted that it overdosed five people with vaccine at its county clinics. Let's also not forget that the health department has not only been sued once, but is now about to be sued twice. The first time Einters was sued was for his illegal mask order that he put forward in May twenty twenty. Now it appears that on the agenda, I saw taxpayers paid more than eighteen thousand to cover that lawsuit. The bottom line is that the health department, like all governmental institutions, is political, not a little polit, not a little political, but very political. No one trusts public health anymore, with all the flip-flopping of the CVC and the aggressive tactics of the St. Joseph County Health Department, and our health department already threatening mask mandates again, and criticizing citizens who dare to question their pseudo-science. I do not support a health department that seeks to control us and lock us down. The people have had it, and want to make our own decisions. And the more you stifle us from putting forward our opinions on lockdowns and masks and contact tracing and government control and honoring health departments, the louder it will be, especially when it comes to election time. Thank you.
Jesse Davis, P.O., Box ten, two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. So, hopefully you're all listening here, because there's a lot of people in this community who are your constituents, who put you in those seats and elected you. You were employed by us, and Mr. Morton, you were very rude to that woman. You seemed very upset by her comment, so I'm going to correct...
Hold on, hold on, sir. No, I, no, I wasn't. I just, no, you know what, that's your opinion.
It's on video, it's on...
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Okay, so don't interrupt me, let me finish. I'm speaking, this is my three minutes.
But no, but you, but you made an accusation towards me, and all I did was let her know, okay, that...
Very loudly, very quickly.
It's restricted, it's restricted to items, items not on tonight's agenda.
Can I finish the...
And she very eloquently...
But you were wrong, Mr. Morton.
Well, that's your opinion, sir.
No, it's not an opinion, you showed me on that agenda where it says anywhere that the public was not allowed to speak on that. That was just something you said. It's not written on that agenda, sir. So, that, you, you said she couldn't...
That's the council rules.
That's not something I... Well, the law says that anytime you're doing a bill or a resolution, you're supposed to let the public speak. So, it was not on the agenda that the public couldn't speak. You made that rule, you changed the rule for that one bill. Yes, sir.
No, I did not. I did not change the rule.
Yes, yes, you did. I've been to hundreds of meetings, trust me.
You know what, sir? You know, you know what, sir? Privilege of the floor by the council's rules, not by the old Morton's rules. Let it be...
The floor is, is, is basically for items not on tonight's agenda. That's all, that's all I was saying. There was nothing written in the agenda that the public couldn't speak. You, you said that, was all you said. Well, she wasn't, she just said...
I know, that's, that's what I was, I was misunderstanding, that is.
Well, it wa, it was very rude, the way you spoke to her was very rude.
That's your opinion, sir. I just, I just...
That's my opinion, so I'm just telling you, you're an elected official, so you should be a little more polite to your constituents.
All I said was, ma'am, all I said was, ma'am, this part of the meeting, public comment, is restricted to items not on tonight's agenda, and I'll say it one more time. She very eloquently said, let me try again, and her narrative was very good as far as the way she stated it. She did not make reference to anything on tonight's agenda, that's why she was allowed her time. Those are the council rules, those aren't by the old Morton's rules.
Nothing, nothing she said at the beginning about not being allowed to speak was on this agenda, and you stopped her dead in her tracks.
No, because that's why she started again and her narrative changed. When she started out by saying, "Mr. Morton, you had the right to do this and do that," that was a direct reference to what happened to the bill tonight. So, that's why I said, "Ma'am, please, it's not, public comment is restricted to things not on tonight's agenda," and she, like I said, I'll say it for the third time, she very eloquently said, "Let me start over," and she was allowed to continue.
Mr. Morton, I've, I've never had an issue with you, I've known you for several years. She actually said that you did not have a right, and that's what upset you, period. It's, it's on video, trust me.
She didn't say I did not have the right. She started out by saying, you know, hey, you know, it was my discretion, and that was a direct reference to what was on tonight's agenda, and that's when I said, "Public comment is restricted to anything not on tonight's agenda," and actually, when she said, "Well, let me start again," it was a very smooth transition, and I'll say it for the fourth time, she very eloquently started again, and that's why she was allowed.
Okay, well, I'm sure the five thousand members that are viewing it on my community activist page will have their opinions as well, so...
Everybody has an opinion.
I'll digress.
Okay, let me say this, it became awfully rude, I certainly didn't mean to, all I said was, "Ma'am, public comment is restricted to items not on tonight's agenda," and she started again, and she was allowed to...
Then you should, then you should direct that apology to her, not me.
And I apologize, it became awfully rude, ma'am.
Mr. Morton, if we're having, if we're, if we're having a little question...
Mr. Morton, if we're having, if we're, if we're having a little question and answer session, can I ask you?
No, we're not, sir, I was, no, I was responding to his comment that I was rude, and you just suggested that the apology should be directed towards, towards you, ma'am, so that's what I'm doing, if it came off-rude, then I apologize.
Just a point of order, I don't think you're, you're talking about the law right now. I know Triple's not here, but he does have, he did send me the email, I have it copied right here. Can I just read what he sent me today, and I'll, and you can clarify if I'm wrong, because you got it too.
Yes, I'll look at it right now.
Want me to read it? I, I'll, you tell if I'm not, I won't read.
Please.
I wrote to Triple today, the lawyer for the county, and I asked him the rules about resolutions and if the public was right, had a right to speak. His answer was, there is no Indiana code requirement for a public hearing for consideration of a ceremonial resolution and has no legal effect. It is merely an expression of the county council's opinion on the item being considered. The president has the discretion to determine public comment related thereto.
And I'm not disputing that, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm not disputing that at all, I have it right here, that's what I read.
But you didn't, you didn't read that last part, when you read the statement earlier, you did not read the final section.
I didn't read the, I did, I did not read the last part, but the point is, when you got up during the public comment, all I was trying to say was, when you started off by saying, well, I have discretion, to me, that was a direct reference to something that was on the agenda. So when you started again and said, well, let me try this again, no problem.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody in here knows the laws, because that's one of the problems, is when we don't know the rules and they're not available on the website. I had to ask Mr. Triple, unfortunately, he answered me, but nobody in the room knows him either, so that's why I'm going to read it, because you didn't read it fully.
And you know what, ma'am? You know what, ma'am, let me tell you what I did, okay? I called him right away, when we saw your email. I called him right away and said, Mr. Triple, would you please make sure to respond to this request, right away?
Rafael, I, I like working with you generally, I just wanted to make sure that this all read into the record. Thanks.
Is there a precedent set where you've not allowed public comment on a resolution or a bill before?
No, there's no precedent that's been set, sir.
Can I ask you why you did it on this particular one?
What, you did what?
Not allowed comment on, or?
Because, because basically it was a general statement, it had no legal bearing. Okay, so we're not required to have public comment.
I understand you're not required to, but can I ask why you chose to enforce that part of your non-re requirement on this particular one when there's no precedent prior to this that allowed you to, or had you do that before? Is my question.
None of these resolutions has a public comment. We honor the Boy Scouts because they did such a great job, or we honor the softball team that was here, or we honor this particular part, it's not for public comment for everybody to say what they want. Those ceremonial resolutions never have that.
So it's, it wouldn't be on the agenda where we could talk about it, so according to the rules?
It would never be on the agenda.
If, if we're not allowed to speak about it, that wouldn't be on the agenda to say, okay, under public, you know, where we can speak publicly for three minutes now, we can do that, so it's not on the agenda that we could speak on it or against it before, correct?
We were not making any decisions tonight that affected the public. We were not deciding on masks, we were not deciding on vaccinations, we were not deciding on anything that affected the public. We're strictly recognizing, in conjunction with the state of the county tonight, where there was reports on county departments, we chose to recognize the county health department because, yes, they did do a very good job of doing what they could under emergency situations, given a situation that was new to everybody, it was a new virus, it was the novel COVID virus.
Okay, so there wasn't any public comments on the agenda, is what I was asked, correct?
Well, we, we did other resolutions tonight too, for Jessica.
That's right, so any comments?
And they didn't take public comments.
I agree, so any of that would have been subject to, at this final thing where it says, privilege of the floor, one to three minutes on things not on the agenda. One of the things not on the agenda was a public comment about the health department, correct? Am I right?
No, you're wrong.
How am I wrong?
It's printed on the agenda.
They don't, that, that agenda doesn't say public comment per.
That's right, so it's not on the agenda.
Anything listed.
Whatever that says, however you want, sir.
I, I have a politician accusing me of twisting, thank you.
Anything listed on tonight's agenda is not on, for, a privilege of the floor discussion. That's just stated clearly on the agenda. If it was listed on our agenda tonight, it's not to be, it's not open for discussion of privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor is to give people an opportunity to discuss items that are important to them that were not on tonight's agenda.
So I wasn't discussing the fact that you guys did a resolution about, I was discussing things that affected the county, the things that affected the health department, things they were doing. A resolution's a resolution. And that's, so not on the agenda, how are we limited to that?
You're, you're representing the people.
That's why you're allowed to speak, sir, that's exactly what I'm saying. That's exactly what I'm saying, that's why I'll say it for the fifth time. And Miss Drake, when she started again, I'll say it again, very eloquently, she did not state and did not direct it to anything on tonight's agenda, and that's exactly what you did. That's why you were allowed to speak, that's why she was allowed to speak.
Okay, thank you, for clarification, thank you.
And I'll say it again, if I came off rude, Miss Drake, I didn't mean to, I was just making a statement that when you, when you started out, I said, oh, Mr. Morton, I was like, ma'am, you know, that was making reference to something that was on tonight's agenda, and you said, let me start over, and I didn't say a word.
And, and, you know, Council President Morton did exercise his discretionary powers along with the support of the council to not take public comment on this resolution, which is not unprecedented, I mean, like, Mr. Counsel.
But, but you don't understand. And since, and since, okay, I wasn't even going to bring that part up, but since Councilwoman Hess just made that point, the way I try to conduct business with this council, we are a team. I was not about to make that decision, I never have and never will, by myself, even though I could. So I asked each member that was present tonight at our caucus, did they want to hear it or not? So that was not, for the record, it was not my decision, it was the council's decision.
I, I think the point of all of this is that you did a resolution recognizing and praising the health department, and you did it as a body of representatives who represent the people. And pretty much every person that spoke tonight about the health department here was not in the same opinion as you about what happens with the health department and how they've been treated. So you as a representative of the people as a whole, you're praising them and you're not giving the public an opportunity to even say how they feel about this recognition you're giving to the health department.
I, I have to disagree with you, sir, because the gentleman there, Miss Drake did, several other people in the audience did exactly what you're saying we didn't give them the right to do. They got up and expressed their dissatisfaction with the health department. But they, their narrative was such that it did not reference anything on tonight's agenda. That's the differentiation that has to be made.
There are also two hundred and seventy thousand people roughly in this county.
Yep, you're right. And how many people, how many people did you talk to before you wrote the resolution? You didn't call any constituent and speak to a constituent specifically about, I will bet you money on it. Give me a list of them, I'll pull.
I, I just want to ask a final question about.
What about the people at home who want to speak?
My, my, my question, Mr. Morton, um, not accusatory or anything, but if you did.
We were applauded for our ability to follow Robert's rules of order earlier. I feel like we are failing at that right now.
Excuse me, I am a virtual person, I would like to speak.
We have an adjournment.
Go ahead, go ahead, three minutes, ma'am, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Jessica Rufford, I live at 55023 Iowa Avenue, Oceola. My concern is about the impending mandates. I am against bans or mandates of any kind. I do not report to my employer if I decide to become pregnant, if I contract an STD. None of my medical health is my employer's business. My employer should not have the right to mandate a vaccination into my body. Myself, I will admit this to you, even though it's not your business about my medicine, I have a clotting disorder, this vaccine potentially will kill me. I have natural COVID immunity, I don't need the vaccine, but I have to prove my status to an employer just to be able to continue to put food on the table for my children. You need to make sure that you protect the citizens' rights. It is your responsibility as elected officials to see it, see to it that no one tramples my rights. I already have them, I don't need to ask for permission to exercise them. You are responsible for making sure no one impedes on them. I will not be okay with any kind of vaccine mandate that is allowed within St. Joe County. Private businesses need to be held accountable for the fact that you can't just willy-nilly fire somebody for medical problems. We are not screening people for natural immunity before vaccinating them, and they are dying of cytokine storm and other adverse reactions. You have got to take into account what this thing is doing, it's experimental, it's not even a vaccine, it's gene therapy. You need to protect our citizens from overreach and mandates from private employers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton, point of order, just a question for you. This was a different topic, this is a different topic. I get three minutes, no matter what topic there is?
If you travel, all the right people want to speak out here virtually, they haven't had a chance to speak yet, because everybody's been out.
So I haven't trampled on their rights, they still have time, you're the one that wants to leave, I'll stay.
I have no problem staying, I've been here the whole one through the morning clock.
Okay, so I have too, so how am I trampling on their rights?
Because you're, you're exceeding the time limit you have, a lot of people want to speak and they have maybe, maybe somebody on the virtual land to get their day to go to work tomorrow. So they have, they have, so they want to.
Are you saying I don't have to look work tomorrow? That's right, you don't know. So I'm not going to sit and argue, I'm going to ask a question of the president. Can I ask you a question? Um, you say that, that you, you started the meeting, I remember with, that you weren't going to allow comment, it was, it was your, uh, I forgot how the law was worded, but you say that you were, you weren't going to allow uh, public discussions on the resolution, correct?
That was from our legal counsel, yes.
Yeah, um, which I understand, and that's your right to do so, but can I ask you why on this particular resolution did you feel the need?
You already asked me that, you already asked me that, yes, you did, and I answered it.
Why did you feel the need to address that to begin with?
Because I wanted to make it clear, because there's two types, there are two types of resolutions. There's a resolution like we did tonight, it was just a statement of support. It had no action, it had no legal ramification whatsoever, it was a generalized.
No, no, I'm sorry, you misunderstood the question, I'm not asking why you.
I'm trying to explain to you, there's two types of resolutions. And this is why I read that statement, because this was not a resolution that had any type of legal action or decision, that's all I'm saying.
No, I understand that, and I understand why you limited the comment to no comments. I'm asking why you chose this particular resu-, resu-, resolution to comment of why you weren't allowing comments.
Because I was trying to make it clear there again, that there's two types of resolutions. I wanted to make that clear, that's all I'm saying, Mr. S.
So you didn't have any pre-knowledge that people were coming to speak against us or anything, no?
Matter of fact, sir, I'm, I'm glad, I'm glad you said that, okay? Because another, another thing I did today, when it was talked about that, well, under state statute, since this is just, since this is just a general show of support, another thing I did was, I got on the phone with Commissioner Dieter, and I said, Commissioner Dieter, it looks like, you know, this is, because this is just a general declaration of, of declaration, I can't say it, of support, it's not anything legal. If you know of any people that are planning to come speak tonight, please let them know that that's not going to be allowed, because I'm a firm believer, and if people think they can come to speak and they won't get to, I'm going to be able to make, let them know as much as I can beforehand.
So you believe that this would have been a contentious subject right early on?
I know it, that's what I'm trying to tell you is.
But that answered my question about when somebody asked, have you spoke to other people in your, in your district or in your county, people do know this is a contentious subject. So I just wanted to be aware that you guys were aware of that, and.
They were aware of that from day one.
Yes, that's, that's, thank you, thank you.
Again, we were recognizing the county department, whether it was the infrastructure planning department or the prosecutor's department, we have discretion to do that if we felt they did extraordinary work.
I, I understand, and that was just my.
And I don't think that people would have come and spoken out against that, so I, I.
You didn't think people would have spoken about the health department, or? I'd also like for the record that Mr. Katanzarite is, uh, done with this discussion and.
I'm not done with the discussion, but I think if some people want to speak, you've had your limit, you've exceeded your limit.
I think you've had your limit, and I'm going to see that you exceed your limit, thank you.
Let's see if you can do it.
I will, I will, I mean, is this an offer or what, you're going to resign?
What are you going to do? No, I'm not resigning, my duty, but I said, if some people want to speak.
But you're taking one of the people who happens to be in your district.
You've had your time, Mr. Wisconsin, you've exceeded your time.
And I'm speaking with the president, I don't need you overriding the president for me asking the question. Then you can go to the bathroom, or you can step out, but I was speaking with the president.
I need you to go to the bathroom, I mean, you said I want your, but it might be wrong, to what their issue might be.
It might be, but I was speaking to the president, he has the control of the floor, not you.
That is for us.
Sir, I, I, I believe I did answer all your questions.
Yes, you did, I was going to walk away, thank you, Mr. Morton.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to take advantage of privilege of the floor?
Hearing none, ma'am, wants to do adjournment?
Cool.